State your name and address on all agenda items except for.
In form, each member of the public wishing to speak on a topic will be allowed to speak one time each for a period of up to three minutes. Speakers should direct comments to the board, not the audience, and speakers shall not disrupt the proceedings of the public body nor speak out of turn. This will bring us to item number one, report from fire and rescue.
Hello, so this month we had six medical calls, one motor vehicle accident, and one mutual aid to Omaha which was incorrectly binged out. For our trainings, we. To go over just different trainings for the pool, lifeguards, so they get a little bit more hands-on. And then, other than that, we've just been kind of hanging out and prepping for Eagle Days. Do you guys have any questions or anything for us?
Just a reminder to the board that we're going to be using the skid loader and back hoe for water wars.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that takes us to item number two, updates on the potential for a new car and rescue station.
The reward attorney's going to get with Maureen this week, not good today, so hopefully we'll have a lot of that stuff finalized here probably, I would say, mid-July, so we can get everything implemented for the next budget.
Questions, speakers? Thank you. Alright, that takes us to item number three, open forum. Open forum is for discussion regarding items not found on the agenda and that do not require the spending of taxpayer dollars. Is there anybody present that would like to speak during open forum? Alright, that takes us to side number four, consider the use of sanitary improvement district funding for development to South Highway 34.
Where would you like me to stand?
Oh, I don't know where you want to stand.
Reminds, over here might be you.
So I'm Paul McCune from Gretna, Nebraska, developer from Gretna. And as everybody probably knows, we've been proposing this potential project for Eagle since the previous developer didn't go forward with it. We're looking at a two-phase project here, and then phase one is somewhat is drawn, that line might be straight down a little bit there, depending on how that ends up. But phase one would be the west piece. We talked some about doing the east piece, but because we were trying to avoid doing the turn lane on the highway, which at this point, after all the due diligence and running all the numbers, we're better off just putting the turn lane in and keeping the first piece to the west. We have talked actively with the school about the potential school site on here, which they seem to be very, very interested in, and the process of trying to get a more solid meeting with them to see how they feel about going forward. And we have the commercial pieces there that you see, which would also be part of the first phase. Haven't really been trying to find any suitors for those yet, but, and just for the record, as we talk about an SID, we are not anticipating putting those commercial lots in that SID, leaving them out of the SID. And so let's go on with an SID, and I don't know what everybody's level of education on an SID, sanitary improvement district. When we form a district, that district basically becomes its own town, so to speak, for this area, and they can accrue debt, they can do improvements to that by issuing warrants to people to buy those warrants. They buy those warrants because they get 7% tax-free, state and federal. So the money guys love buying SID warrants. It's a great, great tax break for them, so we find plenty of people to buy the warrants. And in this particular case, you have special assessment debt, which basically goes on the, every lot has street sewer, water, and pavement in front of it. The debt that's associated with that lot gets assessed to that lot. That lot, before it can be built on, has to pay that debt. Debt that's not directly associated with an individual lot, like an intersection, a turn lane, things like that, those are general obligation debts of the district which is paid back out of tax base, not your tax base, just that SID's tax base. SID will pay its own taxes, they'll pay more in taxes than what you do as a resident in town. And eventually, once that SID has paid that debt down enough, the city then wants to annex it, because they can make money off the taxes once they get the debt down. But in the meantime, we do everything to your specifications, we don't do anything within that SID that you don't approve of, and then once we build it out, everybody can start building houses, we gain valuation, valuation pays taxes, taxes pay the debt down, and ultimately the city ends up taking it over, and by then we're looking at our next phase. This particular case, you're five years at least before we're looking at phase two. There's a lot of lots in Eagle, but you know, at the end, I think we're 53 acres worth of lots, because the school's sitting at 17 acres there, and the school has to pay its fair share of that SID also. They pay, they pay part of that general obligation debt, they pay their share of the special assessments that's going into this, but we don't charge them very much for the land, so we make it affordable for the school, because we like schools and the developments. It's pretty painless for the city. We have a sheet here, right here, Y and SID. They can annex once the debt has been paid down and it's cash flow positive for the village. Village still has full authority to assure improvements are installed through the village's specs. County and school district will benefit from the increased taxable valuation, you're getting some nice new houses. SID brings projects online quickly, which allows for quicker residential growth, saves money by putting all improvements in at once versus several small phases. So we go in there and do a 70-acre project, instead of trying to do 20 houses down here and kind of inch along. We put in a real project, we market a real project, we give you something the city can be proud of, and people can move out here and get a nice new house in Eagle. SID allows for affordable and workforce housing by keeping the prices lower, so just understand, if we don't have an SID, then we have to pay that general obligation debt that I was talking about that isn't assessed towards a lot. These lots would be $20,000 more a lot without an SID. Now all of a sudden, instead of having a $60,000 lot that we can compete with Lincoln, with the builders from Lincoln, we got to have $80,000, $85,000 for a lot. Now we're as much as Lincoln for a lot, we don't have anything to entice them with. Right now, we can entice them with price. We can entice them with location too, everybody like, I'm an original Gretna guy, and I bet the first development I did in Gretna was $3,000 acre ground. We used SIDs to build Gretna. I helped Gretna control their own growth at the time, the village was wanting to annex them. I worked hard with Gretna to make sure that Gretna was always on top of what Gretna wanted instead of what somebody else wanted them to do. We've done them in Gretna, we're doing one in Bennington right now, I'm doing one in Springfield as we speak. I like little towns, I'm a little town guy, I grew up, I was born in Springfield, lived in Gretna. I don't want to go develop in Omaha, I just don't. I like the little small-town stuff, I like the people, the idea within the small towns, and it's fun to take something, a cornfield more or less, and make it into something very exciting and new, and watch towns be able to grow at their own pace. And so we're very excited about this, but again, without the SID, we can't make the lots affordable, I can't make them, I can't sell them, and we just, we can't move forward if we don't have an SID. Now, we did it, SID number 12, we've already done here, out in Eagle Land, over the acreage lots. We used that tool to upgrade the water system for the west side of town, because I think works really well. That's what SIDs are for, to help communities out, help them improve their, you know, as we get into this, you guys grow, I know we've talked about a new water tower at some point, this is something we'll be able to contribute to significantly for the village when that time comes. And again, that's what we're for. And that being said, any questions? Feel free to ask some questions, because.
Paul, are those all single-family homes, or do you have some duplexes you may count?
These are 60 and 65 footers as drawn there today, that drawing may morph into some of those duplex lots.
So up in phase two, this kind of tan color, we're showing some duplex lots there, but phase one right now is drawn like Paul said, 60, 65 footers.
What's the difference between the dark yellow and the light yellow lots?
The light yellows are 60-foot minimum lot with the darker 65s.
Oh, that's correct.
Just a slight like colored gradation, so my engineers can help you fix the street.
And then phase two, the blue area, that's just undetermined?
Yeah, we've got that kind of flag for like industrial, like industrial use right now, we've kind of talked about, you know, making townhomes, we're trying to figure out what's the right fit there ultimately.
Okay. You know, we just recently shifted back to going more to the west piece versus the east piece. As you can see with the east piece, you see all that green, you see all that blue, that's a lot of waste ground. We're not getting very good harvest of lots, that's why all of a sudden it made more sense that we could harvest more lots on this, the school liked that site. We're better off going down here where we get more density for the first phase, and then in the more, I'll call it the sexier area with more green and more trees, we'll save that once we got momentum, and at that point, because we're giving up so much ground to green space, we got to be able to get more lot to make up for the lack of density, and we'll be able to get that on the second phase, once phase one's created the excitement. We see this as 20 lots a year, 20 houses a year. If people get the misconception notion that there's, you know, a line of cars rolling in in two weeks, this is 15 houses a year, 20 if we get hot, if it gets going, good. But, you know, but, and I, we've already talked to a few people a little bit about those commercial lots, we're not, again, we're not putting them in the SID, we talked about that in city staff before we came in here to do this, it was kind of the wish to at least not put those in the SID, and, so we're not, so you guys will get the, what do they do, annex that?
Yeah, we want to set it up that way, so the commercial lots aren't part of the SID, so those people decide to annex with sales, tax revenue, it's kind of sitting there ready for that to occur.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we do, is annex that and get the property taxes and the sales taxes off of those, yes.
So this SID, you know, it's funny, because people get this, I hear it all the time, you're not putting an SID in our town. And then inevitably, we usually do, once they get fully educated on it, but Lincoln's got this non-SID attitude that they've tried to spread throughout Cass County, Lancaster County, and it's really hampering Lincoln on their growth potential, on their expansion of their infrastructure to be able to put in subdivisions. They can't, and when they do, a 65-foot wide lot in Lincoln's $90,000, we're looking at $60,000 for the city, because we don't have to pay that SID stuff. And they do pay a little more in taxes to live in an SID.
Paul, is it your intent at least to offer, would be some of the building for independent builders, or?
It would be our intent right now to find out who wants to really talk to us and put a deal together, as we speak today, because we just shifted down here. It is our intent, we may very well do an open concept where we'll get 10 builders and they all pick 15 lots apiece. In a perfect world, we get the 10 builders, they all get 15 lots apiece, and they got to build those out in five years. So we know that they're going to do three houses a year, each of them, and we know in five years this thing, you know, in three years we're starting to grade the next phase. But I've never, I remember Gretna at the time, back in the day when people are going, "You're doing that in Gretna?" Like, yeah, I think we've gotten ready for some housing. And it's the same thing here, people, I don't know how ready Eagle is, I'm willing to give it a try.
And you think it's better still to stick with single-family rather than doing townhomes right here next to Marshall?
We may very well be doing that. Again, we just decided recently to go back to this west piece, so we have to do a little more homework on whether you're going to townhome it, or twin homes, we call them, duplexes. There's a lot of demands for those things now. I don't get it, but a lot of people like them, they want them. I see people build them all the time, when I'm driving around, I'm like, wow, look at that, and then they're full, and I'm like, okay. I'm way old-school, you know, but people are getting into that. But you guys should look at this as something very exciting for the city, and be happy to be part of something that small towns do need a place for the young people and the people that want to grow up here and stay here, they need a place to build a home. And again, this isn't too big, it's a nice size, you get a new school, you get some commercial lots, you get a couple businesses that you might want to go support out there, and it can be very exciting. But again, and I don't know how they get to the point where we can find out, I wish you guys would just call us and say, you know what, it was a great presentation, but no, you're not putting an SID in our town. Then, then we get it, we're not, you know, we get it, we've got, we've got 27 acreage lots over here, we haven't sold one yet, so. And/or, you know what, we think you got a great project, it's going to be fun to work with us, work together, bring something really nice to the town, and work together on our new subdivision, and then we're going to be very excited and move forward with it. That's just where we're at.
Those little, the green squares there, that would have to be like a soccer field or a baseball field or something, wouldn't it?
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we contemplated as part of this, this is about 17-acre school site, we're thinking some type of sports fields there. We also have a separate park that we designate here, about a five-acre park. That's in addition to some of these other kind of, we'll have some of these open spaces for the detention basins that are required to be able to storm through regulations, but then even, we've got little pockets in here where we're just calling it enhanced open space now. It's not a formal park, but we're just a, just a common green space for, you know, kids in the neighborhood to go out and play, basically.
You probably don't know, because I've committed to some stuff like that, but where you got that football in there, would that be big enough to have a track around it also?
Uh, that I don't know, I mean, we've got a lot of kind of open space around it.
It looks like part of it around it that you might.
Here's what I would tell you, 17 acres, that's about the typical size, we've been seeing from some school districts, kind of like that Omaha, Gretna, Elkhorn area, where they would put like a, you know, an elementary school with those types of facilities.
This is interesting, because it's a little chicken and egg here, we're bringing houses, so we need a school. They don't need a school till we get the houses. So it's kind of, you know, if we, if the school didn't make sense in phase one, Joe, show them where you talked about putting it up in the town, or the.
Yeah, we were thinking maybe, you know.
If it's too early for them here, if you can wiggle things around.
Put them up there.
There in that piece, which is a good spot for them also.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the SID, because that's really all we're considering right now.
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to read into the record, just for John Sturm, he was unable to make it tonight, but he did provide us an email, I shared a copy with everybody, and he feels this is a very important issue with the development of Eagle, and he believes that the property south of the highway could truly only be developed via the SID approach. In essence, he recommends. In essence, he, he recommends, if he were here tonight, he would vote in favor of considering SID financing.
Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I do. I'm just kidding.
I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the use of an SID for the development of South Highway thirty-four.
I'll say it.
Any questions, discussion? All right, Nick?
Voting on the motion second to consider the use of, to approve the use of sanitary improvement district financing for future developments south of Highway thirty-four. Voting Marcus.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
You're not going to stick around for a little meeting?
If you guys, anybody ever has any questions, I direct you here all the time. I go to the town forum dot liberty, I go down to my cabinet. That's where I deep, deep and press, so if you ever need anything, I'll stop in town anytime you need, whatever, you'll see me.
And Nick knows how to get a handle on it?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yep. That's right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
See you guys. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item number five. That's the closure of Applewood Drive between David Lane and Douglas Drive on July fourth from twelve PM to eleven PM. Anybody have any questions?
We had any issues with this area?
I didn't like the riding on the concrete, but that was it.
Oh, is that where it happened at?
Otherwise, we'd love to sit in our driveway and watch it.
Yeah. It's a pretty big event, they've been doing it for years.
Ask them if we've had any issues.
No, I mean...
All right, I make the motion that we approve the closure of Applewood Drive between David Lane and Douglas Drive on July fourth from twelve PM to eleven PM.
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Any further questions, discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the closure of Applewood Drive between David Lane and Douglas Drive on July fourth, twenty twenty-five, from noon to eleven PM. Voting on that, James.
Yes.
Marcus.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
That takes us to item number six. Twenty twenty-five millon overlay improvement project bid opening results, recommendation and award.
Okay. This is not supposed to get, be this complicated, but it was. A little bit of the bid getting in late, or the invitation for bids, et cetera, but try to summarize. Bid openings was held on June eleventh at eleven AM. The invitation for bids had a substantial and final completion date of July, July eleventh and July twenty-fifth. We received two bids, one from Catherine Sons, one from Pavers. They're both, they both worked here before, they've both done good work. You'll see their bid numbers on there, eighty-six, eight oh five for Catherine's and eight-three, six-eight-six for Pavers. The issue with both is they modified the completion dates. Catherine's did October thirty-first and November fourteenth respectively, and then Pavers was October thirteenth and October twenty-eighth respectively. There was a third bid that would have met our requirements in the timeframe, but they misread the date, so they were too late, and that bid has to be tossed out. So we have two options. I talked to Maureen, I talked to Barbara. Option one, regardless, the added time submission cannot be considered from Omni Engineering. We can't consider them an option one or two. Number one, the two timely submissions can be rejected outright, and then we can put this up for bid once more, for everyone to rebid. It's obviously not ideal, more costs. Everything also becomes a public records and everybody knows what everybody else bid, so that could be interesting, too. Option two. Option two, the other two can be considered, and since they're both non-compliant to the completion date, the village attorney is comfortable suggesting this can be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder with a change order suggestion to modify the dates to when they have suggested they can do the work. The option with both of these, from our perspective, is they fall out of this year's budget, their next year's budget. And we have much bigger street projects planned for next year's budget, so how do you attack on an extra one of that?
We don't really have F Street anymore.
Right. I mean, yeah, we could do them all, but it would just complicate things either way.
So what's the reason for changing the dates, just their timing?
Yeah, I think, you know, when, when the invitation for bids came out a little later than normal, just for some things that are kind of out of our control. You know, people weren't filling up. We like to publish those February. We didn't get it in till May and June. I think, let me see, I'm going to check one more thing. I think Barbara had a comment on, what did she say? She's like, I would, she would consider option two, but request that the low bidder meet somewhere in the middle with the completion date. For example, complete the project by nine-thirty to save from the fiscal year. If they can make that work, then go to the next lowest bidder. Again, that'd be a question we have to ask Maureen, because that's, that came in late, that question.
Well, if you go with option two, all three bidders can get back in it.
No, the one that submitted a day late cannot get back in.
Unless we were to re-advertise entirely.
Re-advertise.
That's what I mean.
Oh.
Isn't that option two?
If you do that, it's not going to be done before winter.
I suppose, I was just going to say, you're going to put it out too far if you do that.
The paper has kind of a tough deadline to meet. It only publishes once a month, or once a week. You'd probably be looking at, yeah, maybe, I don't, I don't see how.
And you don't want paving in November, December?
No.
No. I think your only choice honestly is to do number two, or you just back out entirely this time. I mean, G Street does need some work, we know that. It's not, it's not great.
But then would you put F Street above G Street?
Yeah, we just have to do, you know, probably budget independently this project. We could probably find some other things to do on the streets that wouldn't require bidding. They always need help with the current money, but... You know, it, it's tough, it's a tough consideration, because it's going to be, we're talking one to three million dollars probably for the concrete next year, so.
Everything's going to go up.
Yeah.
I think we should go with option two myself.
If you do option two, yeah, we could just do a change order, you take the lowest bid, who in this case is Pavers. I know I talked to Dan at one point, and he thought maybe he could talk to those guys and see if they could squeeze us in a little bit earlier.
I think we probably could.
What would you give them, the bid they might?
If they can get over here sooner, that'd be great, just because, you know, it's going to mess some things up budget-wise, paperwork, perfect paperwork-wise. Oh, for sure.
We pushed it off to next year. How does that mess with the one-six-year plan, right?
It wouldn't necessarily... You know, a little bit. We would just have to kind of admit that we didn't get anything done this year in the one year. Yeah, I mean, we tried and it didn't work. Generally, the state doesn't get too excited, they'd be okay with that.
Question, can we prepay part of it using the budget, make sure it's escrowed?
Good question.
I would not want to pay anything near all, but I would, I would consider maybe paying half. That would help us out in the two, twenty-twenty-six budget year.
They would just have to cash that check some way or another, just to have it cleared for the, yeah, that might be an option. We just kind of got behind the eight ball this year.
Yeah, you've got to get the, you've got to get the advertising out in February, March, and by the way, to catch a midsummer date.
And maybe if we prepaid, maybe they'd be more than willing to start a little earlier, quite part of it.
Would it be a good idea at all to, to put the vote off until next time, just to ask them if they could? Tell them what our budget constraints are and the dates and...
I think they need to know that, that job is coming up to fill a slot, otherwise another slot could, we could be out of it.
That'd be my only fear, yeah, that they would, if they did, you know, it'd be a couple of weeks away, July first is our next meeting, they, they could move on without us.
Well, if you know how it can be advertised, then I would say that's...
I mean, ten thirteen, it's so close. If they could just move it two weeks back, or wow, probably three weeks back, but...
And maybe they would be...
Maybe they can. I guess that'd be my recommendation. If we want to get the street done, worst case scenario, we got to rebudget for it next year. Just got to remember that during the budget workshop to take that money out. We know how much the number is this time, so we're not just guessing. Yeah, that's, I guess, if it were me, I guess I'd probably award the bid to Pavers, or if you guys don't want to do it, we, we take no action.
That's my suggestion, just get it done.
How do you feel?
I'd be all right with that.
So I just need a motion to, let's see, accept Pavers' bid in the amount of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars for the twenty twenty-five millon overlay improvements project.
With a change order?
We have a change order.
Yeah. With a change order to modify the dates. Well, they've already picked the dates, it's just, it's us that have to modify our contract, so...
So moved.
So moved on the table?
I'll say it.
Any more discussion?
Voting on the motion second to approve Pavers' bid in the amount of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars for the twenty twenty-five millon overlay improvements project on G Street. Voting on that. Dan.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Marcus.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that takes us to item number seven, consider options for the purchase of a wave vacuum from Aquacan for the Eagle Pool.
Well, I know the other vacuum's been on its last leg forever, and it finally doesn't really do much of anything, so.
We haven't bought one for a long time, right?
It's been a long time. The vacuum's up there.
Way before my time.
It's, it's like pushing a whisk broom around.
Yeah, it's not really sucking anything down.
You're just smearing the dirt, is what we're doing right now.
So I reached out to Aquacan, who is our vendor. This is the, the recommended, this is kind of the new age type vacuum. We just don't have the strength in those filter baskets to suck any of this out.
That's our problem, is where we're at with that.
And this thing's independent of that. The vacuum, it's going to filter in it, just dump, you dump out what it sucks out.
Is this run by itself like at night, or what's that, or the kids run?
Well, I don't know if we, I don't know if we let the kids, but...
So watching it, I've watched the videos, it's basically just a, a remote, you just toss it in the water. So there's a base station, you plug it in, so it comes from the base station. You throw in the water, it's got a basket inside of it that cleans it up, so...
It's got a remote control, you drive it, it comes up the walls, it does your walls for you, too. Yeah, it's pretty neat.
Show, I don't know, maybe the manager or something, so we put it in at the end of the night, the maintenance guys take it out and clean it in the morning?
Yeah, I think you can program it, right, Dan? I think you can program it to do it. Once it knows your design, it'll just go self-clean.
It cleans the walls, it's got the rubber brushes in it.
What's the maintenance on it? It sounds like they suggested do the eighty rather than the hundred.
He actually suggested the hundred. Eighty would be the smallest he would do.
The Wave one hundred is the most popular model, and he would recommend that for the pool.
The cable length's a lot shorter on the eighty, and I watched the differences, don't ask me about it all. It takes a lot longer to do the, the different cleaning cycles.
But if it's just going overnight, doesn't really matter how long it takes?
No, it's not overnight, they watch it.
Yeah.
I thought you said, once you got it programmed, it could...
So that one's ideal for a pool length of sixty-eight feet, or the other one's eighty-eight feet. So there's not a ton of difference. The cord's a lot shorter, it's seventy-eight compared to ninety-eight.
That's why I think we're probably going to run into the shorter cord, just trying to get RL of the pool.
They all have two-year warranties. The biggest thing with all this stuff, so I asked him, I said, "What's the biggest issue with these?" The biggest issue, like anything, four or five years, you're going to start running into maintenance issues. You know, but people generally have no issues for the first two to three years. It just depends on how, you know, how you use them, how you take care of them. But it's like a vacuum cleaner, eventually it's going to wear out.
Our current ones lasted a long time.
What's that?
Our current ones lasted a long time, right?
Yeah, the current ones just kind of, I don't even want to describe it. It's just like a suction hose.
Yeah, it's like a whisk broom, it's got a suction, and you got to hook it to it, but our problem is, is our filter system isn't...
They don't have the suction.
It just isn't in top performance right now.
To be all gone through.
I would think we'd want to go with what they recommend.
Which is the Wave one hundred is what I would recommend.
Yeah, me too.
I'd make a motion to approve a Wave one hundred from Aquacan for four thousand one hundred dollars.
Plus freight.
What's that?
Plus freight.
Plus freight.
I second. Any more discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve the purchase of the Wave one hundred vacuum from Aquacan for the Eagle Pool in the amount of forty-one hundred dollars, plus freight charges. Voting Marcus.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that takes us to item number eight, report on streets and maintenance.
Terry?
Basically, it comes down to number nine, streets and maintenance. Basically, they've been working on a weed acreage park ditch, been mowing. I'm there to go on Sunday night, so last week, Adam was gone on vacation. Most of the week was spent at the sewer plant when they redid the transfer switch. Which was what, Monday?
Yeah, it was Monday, it was last...
Monday, which, which was quite an ordeal. But anyway, the new transfer switch is in. I don't think Skate is hooked up.
Not quite.
Not function, it's hooked up, but it's not functional yet. But it should switch, is my understanding. We've not, I have, Nick and I have not been trained on how to correct any problems with that yet.
We'll need to get out there.
We'll need to get out and show, just in case it doesn't switch by itself, because it's a process, you just don't put a switch. It's a multiple process, we'll have to learn what that is. The guys have a list of a page and a half of things to get ready for Eagle Fun Day, which they're working on, kind of depends on the weather. There's, there's mowing, there's all kinds of things, except have a page and a half of us. You know what the wells are pumping right now?
Over the weekend was our, our highest three-day stretch, it averaged about a hundred and seventy-five thousand today.
Yeah, because everybody's starting to water again, water bills to go up dramatically.
It was hot this weekend?
Yeah, and it's probably going to be hot and dry the rest of the summer, so...
Very well could be.
We'll, we'll buck up against a hundred thousand probably before we get done. Which is only fifty thousand for our maximum, so another thing to keep in mind. Now, I, I mentioned street sweeping, Main Street, but down by the park, I have no idea if they're going to get to it again, depends if it rains or not. We had quite a bit done today, but...
When was the last time we had our street sweeper out?
A year ago, spring. Might like to run that. I don't think Bryce ever has, and Cal and Adam never has, so they'll be learning this worse. And actually, it's a little, it's a little slower, but actually, I've got a cat sweeper.
Yeah, they work, they work pretty good.
Yeah, they work pretty good. We're almost to the point where we need a new pair before, but it still works okay. Anyway, we'll see what happens. Let, let them know if they have time, they're supposed to get to it. Supposed to have the cat back home, push and fill the field, ready to go. For Eagle Fun Day for the party department. Any, any questions?
I, I brought this up before, but I'd like to see our maintenance guys, you know, show up at least once a month, one of them. You know, like...
I, I think, you know, my own opinion of what would work best is they alternate, so a lot of them shocked at each meeting, you know, the, I have to report.
Yeah, so it isn't fair for you to have to do it all the time, they should be here.
I'd recommend probably having one of you guys give them a call, just because it's not always coming from us.
Yeah.
At some point down the road, depending on who gets their... At some point down the road, depending on who gets their sewer license, et cetera, you're having the need to name one of the maintenance superintendents.
Yeah.
You might be careful doing that, but, uh, yeah, you don't have to do that. I make the list, I try to check most of the things, but I don't have time to check everything.
That shouldn't all be put on you, that shouldn't be your deal.
Job's limited to hours, so I don't have time to do everything.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up is our hydrant down there. I don't know if they started digging that up, or even had a chance to, I'm sure they're busy right now, but...
Well, well, we talked to Colton about the, the air hydrant by the community garden. He does not believe that to be hooked up to any air system at all.
Are they not liking running up and down?
Yeah, it's probably not real fun, but...
I wish that we could get that, I mean, it'd seem like that much to fix that hydrant.
Well, we don't think it's up to the main. So you'd have to run a whole new, you know...
Well, I mean, I wouldn't suggest, if they dig it down and realize that it's not up to the main, then we can just abandon it and get it out of there, you know?
We can get a price on that.
You know, it's either, see if we can fix it or just get rid of it.
Wanna bid on that?
Well, it, it, it comes down to how much money you wanna throw into the community garden. So already, already, the board approved the hundred dollars, and we've got bills for over three hundred dollars.
For what?
Well...
I guess I hadn't heard about this.
Well, just miscommunication, I think. I think they both went out and bought stuff, and I, I don't really know, but we, uh...
They only asked for a hundred dollars for signs.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't ask for any...
Another subversion.
I think it's signs and seats, but totally, totally.
But then there were some other, they had to get a longer hose, they had, that was seventy bucks, and there was, which we could've bought, but whatever. Um, I don't remember what else, what else was there? A hose, a hor, a hose rack, a padlock, some keys, 'cause we couldn't give them a master key, you know, so. It, by the time it was all said and done, it's about three hundred and one dollars and some change, so.
It's a sparsely produced, so I don't produce.
But it also is, hopefully, one time, which is...
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, I think it probably needs to typically operate as a community garden should, you know, the public puts in, and, you know.
But anyway.
It'd just, it'd be nice if they communicated about it.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't know until I got the receipts.
The benches thing will probably have to bore under the street if we tap into the main, which is something to be expensive, so if you're looking, I, I think Colton threw out the number of, of our cost between three and four thousand, okay, now...
By the time you do everything.
I'm not suggesting that, I would just suggest that we dig, see if we can make it work, if not, just get rid of it.
We're relatively sure there's no water to the line. Can't prove that, but we're relatively sure.
What's the man's over there, the weird, no, is that that steel line? Is it, what water mains over there?
I don't remember if it's...
Because if you look, it's right in line with the other hydrant across the street. It's like, it's water...
But you're after, either way you go, you're after bore under the street.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no water, there is no water.
That, that's the expensive part, though.
And just one more comment on the sewer, sewer project area, you was talking about the generator. I think some of you might know, some of you might not, we ended up having to hire a pump truck, um, we worked eleven to five, pumped twenty-eight thousand gallons, that was in addition to twenty-four hundred dollars that we didn't expect, but we had to, otherwise we would've been in big trouble.
And that was cheap, because we, he didn't have to haul it away, he put in our tanks and Bryce pumped it out through the, uh, what are they, uh, irrigation tank, so that's virtually all cleaned up now.
So we appreciate them coming out, dropping everything in, helping us out that day.
Yeah, he threw it in real well.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes side number ten, approve of the nine minutes as typed for the previous meeting.
I'd make a motion to approve minutes as typed. Second.
Any discussion? Nick?
Voting on the motion second to approve minutes. Dan?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that takes side number eleven, report on fees and boards. Anybody?
I have a couple things, but whatever.
Go ahead, Dan, I'll go up there.
So I, I wanted, I was gonna talk with Marcus, I would just do it here in this, but, uh, so I was talking with the girls tonight, and we normally close the pool at five o'clock on like the fourth and fifth. Wanted to make sure that was okay with the rest of the board, if that's...
Close at five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they told me, too, so.
I just wanted to make sure, so everybody knew what was going on, because...
That's what they normally do, that's...
Everybody usually leaves and goes and does their own thing with their family.
Yeah.
Typically, those are really slow days for the pool, anyway.
So, I was just wanting everybody, I think that was what we were discussing, I was gonna have the girls do if that was okay with them.
There are a couple of minor tweaks in ours, too, for training one night on the twenty-third, and then they accidentally booked a pool party on the night of swimming lessons, which I think the evening people were made aware were gonna do it a little bit earlier that night, so hopefully, you know.
So there's also...
Your wife knows?
There's also a pool party on the night of the pool, or Eagle Days as well. And then also, closing time for Eagle Days, last year we closed a little early as well, but I just wonder what's, everybody else's thought?
How are they gonna do the pool, are they gonna do the pool party?
Yeah, they're, but they've already paid.
On Eagle Days?
On Eagle Days.
That's really probably not a big deal if they have to get it...
Then if the fireworks ain't till ten, they close at nine anyways.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, whatever you do.
But I was, so we haven't said an exact time to close, but I told her when we started getting, whether there's anybody there, just go ahead and close, just so everybody knows for the day of Eagle Days, that's what we're gonna do.
We just usually like to go up after the parade when it's really hot.
Yeah. She said last year that after the parade, not very many people came back.
And that could be?
And I said, well, if it gets to be where there's just a couple kids, I'll just close it until your pool party. That's what we're gonna do.
All right.
That was all I had.
Anybody else?
So, uh, and maybe Travis can help with this, I, what was the, the outcome of all of the pickleball and everything that we've done so far? I remember you, you had me sign off on a grant request and everything, and...
I gave it up there, you don't want it. Um, so, we put in a request for twenty-five thousand, and we did get an offer back, but it was not anywhere near that amount.
Okay.
So the group decided that we reply, declined the offer, and so we are not moving forward that far this year.
Okay.
Decided, uh, it wasn't worth trying to push forward without that grant fund.
Good.
And we're still talking with Dan and Marcus, just the other options.
All right. One other thing directed for you.
Yes, sir.
Our sign on the highway.
Yep.
What do we need for that? Can we get it working?
Soon.
Yeah. I was just wondering where we were at on it.
So, I get you nerdy details, or I can get you the simple details?
Just the simple, we don't need long-term.
There's a network between the two, uh, screens? Once that's on, you'll see the heartbeat on the other one, the blinking light?
Uh-huh.
And then the network back to the village office, and then from village office, it could be programmed.
Perfect, okay.
And doesn't require any extra subscriptions for that, it's just a wireless antenna that connects the two.
Timeline, what are we looking at?
Uh, I, things have kinda changed in my personal life.
Yeah, I understand.
I'd say in under two months.
Okay. But just, just asking.
Yeah, it's respectful, it's good.
Yeah, I wanted to say, too, if you guys would point out to people that we don't want them to use chalk, that spray chalk is very bad, it's on a court, and it's hard to get off, and it kinda stains, and we really kinda hesitate to use sidewalk chalk, because we don't wanna encourage kids to go on there and write with chalk as well. So, as long as it's, that's not a problem, I wouldn't say you couldn't use sidewalk chalk, but if it becomes a problem with the kids, then we probably have to say no to that as well.
Are you open to the possibility of considering just painting the lines on it coming through?
We are open to, I think that we need to put money into recirc, not resurfacing, but redoing the tennis courts, and if we have to do new concrete or whatever, at that point in time, yes, I would entertain that.
Can we connect with the Parks Department, maybe tonight, and discuss something?
And I would hesitate, I would just warn the Parks Committee that they are an advised group committee, and that they still have to be the board.
So we're not allowed, you, I should make sure, sidewalk chalk is okay?
I think sidewalk chalk will be okay unless it eventually encourages, encourages kids to do things that they shouldn't do, but the spray chalk is not a good idea.
Chalk, I guess I know.
We had to have our guys go down there and clean it off, and it, because it looked horrible, because the lines were not very straight, and it was really not very nice looking, and so we had our guys go down there and clean it off today, and it best kinda stained.
I guess I went down there, too, and I didn't see stained, I don't really, I mean, I guess it's chalk that washed it off when it rained?
I don't think the spray chalk will wash off when it rains, they had to work to get it off of there.
Typically, a lot of the locators, some locators use that chalk, and it can use it over the last, a week or so, and it's marked off. That's where there's, there's kind of a debate on whether or not they should enforce, or not, because it doesn't last.
I think that at this point in time, until, until we have said that we will pay for the lines on there, I think that you should just go with the temporary sidewalk chalk. You all sorry, man?
Me too.
All right, meeting adjourned.